Welcome to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting for November 2, November 2, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're doing a little housekeeping first. We're getting a revised application, thank you, for one of the items on the agenda this evening. In the meantime, for the transcriptionist, Ms. Houston is absent this evening. The rest of the board members are present. We also have present this evening Mr. Welch, Mr. Atkins, and Mr. Zarkowski, our CPL engineer, Planning Board Engineer, and Planning Board Attorney, Richard Krogan. Also this evening, I'll point out that for any first-time applicants appearing this evening, everything is considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. To our agenda, approval of October 5, 2022 minutes, I need a motion to accept. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Ms. Witt, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda, Roger Parmalley, 33 Mulberry Street, a guitar store. Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good. Yourself?
Doing well.
Great.
I apologize for last night not having, this is an oversight on my part, so that's my fault. I apologize for that.
No problem. We're here this evening to hopefully move forward.
Cool.
Just so you remind the board what you do, please, and state your name for the record.
My name is Roger Parmalley, and I am a guitar maker. Luthier is like the technical term for it.
And you plan to open a shop, store, testing facility? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, it's my line of guitar, so I'm in the development stage right now, so I'm doing a lot of prototyping, a lot of design work, mostly all computer stuff right now because I'm designing everything in a program called CAD.
Right.
And it also has a combination of a CAM software, which is like the manufacturing end, so there's a lot, there's a lot that I'm diving into that I'm getting caught up to speed on, and so right now I'm really heavy in the computer side of things, you know.
Can you just tell us your hours of operation, please?
Well, it's just me, so it's, you know, kind of at my own schedule, but generally speaking-
Give us a broad brush.
I'm there from like 10 to 8.
Is that daily?
Daily, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application? Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the phone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
And just for the record, Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? That's the one thing we missed before. Okay. All right, I'll go to the board for any comments, questions, or concerns. He's in the DMU zone. He does have parking, but we can waive it, but he does have adequate parking. Okay.
Any comments from the Building Department? And Mr. Atkins, any comments from Fire?
The building is getting into compliance right now with fire alarm systems, and the sprinkler systems have all been repaired, so looking good.
Okay. Are you the owner of the property, sir?
No.
Am I missing the owner's endorsement? I don't have it in my packet. You do have a copy, okay. I don't, just have it in my packet. That's okay.
So let the record reflect that we do have a copy of the owner's endorsement.
Okay. Back to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Anyone online, Ms. Hanson?
Not at this time.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Go through the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, on the resolution, 33 Mulberry Street, a guitar store, with hours of operation, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. Subject to City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances, ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and where applicable, the County of Orange. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone, all applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and other sections enacted by the Common Council from this date forward. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Simply stating, if you don't start work on your project in the next six months, you must send us a letter of extension to keep your approval active. Okay?
Clear.
I will need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you again for your patience.
I appreciate it. I apologize again for the mis-sight on my end.
Okay.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Next up, Jai Lee, hope I said that right, 104 North Street, Tea Room.
Good evening.
How you doing, sir? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Ji, Ji Li.
And what's your intentions, sir?
Yeah, we are applying for a tea shop on the 104 North Street. There will be about 224 employees. The operational time going to be daily from 8:30 to 10:30.
You say-
Sorry, 8:30, 10:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Okay, that's fine. No, just, so it's 10:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Yes.
And it's Monday through Sunday. That's known as daily. Thank you. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application? Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Do we have anybody on the phone?
No one.
Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. This is the old Lonsberrys Building. Yep, we approved the apartments, and we also approved these three stores in the bottom, but they have to come back now individually, and that's what this gentleman is doing, to open each one of those stores.
So this is just the Tea Room, not the second floor, right?
Correct.
Because we already approved the second floor.
It's just a commercial space. We've already approved the space above.
Okay, yeah, because the plan has the proposed second floor plan, so, okay.
Are you going to be doing any cooking in there?
Going to be only the portable electric stall for the cooking, the bubble starch, I don't know if you know, like bubble teas. Yeah, only heat up and no smoke.
Mr. Atkins will comment.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. Walter and I have been to this building multiple times. They're set up, and I'll make sure he's clear on what he needs to do.
Okay. As the approval states, it's always by the DPW, Middletown Fire Department, whatever's necessary, they have to comply.
If there is a kitchen, though, they have to get approval from the County of Orange.
Right, yes.
Okay.
We have to waive parking on this, right?
We, yeah, we have to. Well, we can, because it's DMU. No parking's available. Well, they, actually, the building does have parking, but we're going to waive it anyway. I believe they, across the street is parking that Lonsberrys had. I'm not sure if it went with the property or not. It could be municipal parking now. Go back to the public one more time. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Go through the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Did you check online, make sure there was no one?
She said there was no one.
Okay.
I did do it the second time, you're right, but she said there was no one online. Okay. On the resolution, for 104 North Street, Tea Room, hours of operation will be 10:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. daily. Subject to the Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, the approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and if there's going to be a kitchen in the County of Orange. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone, applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the Common Council from this date forward. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Same thing, if in six months' time you have not started your project, please send us an extension letter to keep your approval active.
Sure.
Excuse me. I need a motion. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Mr. Madden? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Please see the DPW for your permits and the Middletown Fire Department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I closed the public hearing, didn't I?
You closed it before you went to the-
Yeah, I know. That's right. Not a big deal. All right, next up is Karina Mateo, 97 North Street Bar.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karina Mateo. I was rushing, I'm so sorry.
Good evening.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Karina Mateo. And so I requested an approval for 97 North Street. So what I'm requesting, I'm trying to transfer my liquor license and bar from Allenville over here. This is my hometown. I'm actually from here, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Two, we have our mailings?
Actually, email it to you. I thought you said I'd email it to you.
We have the email copy, so.
Okay, so we have, we have proof that she has mailed it. Okay, good. In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anybody on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We'll go through the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Obviously, with the liquor license, that would be subject to New York State issuing that. So whatever the board does, it's still up to the state to approve your location.
And you know that it'll only be beer and wine?
Yes.
According to your lawyer, checked by our attorney, that's all you'll be able to have there, okay? Any, any food or anything of that nature, Middletown Fire Department, DPW will make sure that you follow whatever is necessary?
Preparation and stuff.
Do you plan on cooking there?
No, not, that's not in my plans for now.
Okay, approved just as a bar, then. We'll waive parking. Yes, Mr. Numcheck?
Hours of operation?
So I know that I put some hours of operation on the application, but when I submitted the application, I wasn't aware of the hours of operation of the church in front of us, so I want to change them, so I don't interfere with them in any way. So my hours of operation is going to be from like Thursdays and Sundays, 3 to 12 or 1, and then on weekends, from 3, 4 in the afternoon to like 4.
Well, I think you're also governed by the Middletown Code as far as what hours you're allowed to be open.
Yeah, of course, whatever hours I'm allowed to be open.
Well, right. During the week, she can be open till, I think, midnight, but I think on Friday and Saturday, she's allowed to be open to 2 a.m. And then Sunday, I believe it's, it's midnight again. I would have to double-check. That's part of the DMU code, that's the zone that you're in. So whatever hour of operation that you, that you're going to operate under, that's the parameters you have, you will fall under, okay?
Okay.
I don't want to misquote them, so I won't include them right now, but I will say that you'll be subject to the DMU zone timeframes.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
Okay.
Walter, would you happen to know them?
No, I know, that's two of them. I thought you wrote the four blocks.
Not, according, we've approved other facilities, but they weren't allowed to be open till whatever the zone called for. The DMU zone changed some of those hours, and that's why I don't want to state them, okay?
So on weekends, it's only until 2, right?
Pardon me?
So weekends is only 2?
Yeah, I believe it's Friday and Saturday to 2 a.m., and then Sunday it drops back to, to midnight again.
Okay.
And during the week, I believe it's all midnight. I'm not 100% sure, though.
Okay.
Okay. That's why I don't want to put them in the resolution. You'll, you'll, you'll coincide whatever the zone calls for.
Okay. As of right now, the only employees that I had at the moment, because, you know, it wasn't so good up there. We was really into the woods, so it's only, it's a family business. It's me, my boyfriend, and then I have one employee and one security. Yeah.
I saw in the application that you were thinking DJ, or is it live music, or just-
Yeah, that's only for Fridays and Saturdays. For Thursdays and Mondays, I mean, Thursdays and Sundays is, it will only be music, but like YouTube or something like that.
There are noise ordinances, so you'd have to stay within those.
I'm sorry?
Noise ordinance, so you'd have to stay within those, the limits.
I'll also include that, that any music will follow the DMU zone restrictions, that's all.
Is, is there anybody above you? Any apartments above you?
No.
Anyone else from the board? I'll go back to the public. Anyone present wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Go back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, on the resolution, Karina Mateo, 97 North Street Bar. That will be based, your hours of operation will be based on the DMU zone limitations and restrictions. Same thing with any music that has to be, take place. It'll be according to the DMU zone limitations and restrictions, and of course, the SLA is in, is in charge of giving you your license, your liquor license, and to date, we see that the license will only be for beer and wine, okay? Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, in the State of New York, and where applicable, the County of Orange. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables to an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone, applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the Common Council from this date forward. Whereas, pursuant to the city code of Middletown, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Simply put, if you don't get started within the next six months, you must send us a letter stating what's going on so that we can extend your approval. All right? I will need a motion. Mr. Brito, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Brito?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. See to DPW and the Middletown Fire Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Faintane College, 92 Seward Avenue, Student Dormitories and Amenities.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Please state your name for the record and your intentions.
Sure. My name is Anna Chan. I'm here to present for Faintane College regarding 92 Seward Avenue. It used to be a nurses quarters for the state facility, and now we're looking to renovate it into student center mainly for dormitory purposes.
Okay. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go through the board for any question, comments, or concerns.
Does this need an EAF, a seeker?
This is a change of use, correct?
Yes.
I do need to submit seeker.
It used to be?
Used to be.
I don't know. It's up to you.
Nurses quarters.
Well, it was nursing quarters before nursing dormitory? So then John, no?
No, okay. I see it says here about this lot, city owned. Does that need an easement or anything on this with, on the parking map?
I believe it's going to become municipal parking.
Oh, okay.
Which still be, they can use. We have 52 pages of, of plans, if anyone wants to look at it. It's really, there are dormitories, there are, their interior, their mechanical rooms, but we need to look at the site plan and determine whether or not we need to have any engineering done. It's kind of in line with the rest of the state hospital grounds and the Faintane College area, but I'm willing to put it out to the board. That's why we're here.
You're proposing the dormitories and other amenities slash services. What would those include?
Just on the ground floor, there will be some space where students will be able to have breakfast or lunch, basically those amenities. The, the rest of the space won't really be changed. It used to be a nursing quarters, so all the rooms will really just be for dormitories. It's just the open space on the ground floor, aside from the mechanical space. There'll be some, some space for students to be able to have meals.
And do you have a number of rooms that you're proposing?
Each floor has approximately 50 rooms, but they're not going to be changed. They're as-is.
And there's four floors?
There's three floors and then the ground floor, three floors above.
So is that, I'm sorry, is that 150 rooms then?
I mean, that's my math.
Approximately, right.
If that's one person per room, are there going to be more than one person per room?
Some, some rooms are large enough for two people, yeah.
So this municipal parking is well more than is needed for that one facility?
The code doesn't have a requirement for dormitory parking.
It's really our discretion, our conversation. That's why we're doing this. You know, it could be one space per room, or two spaces, whatever. As long as we feel that there's adequate spaces, like you stated, then we're okay.
What are the age of your students that would be living?
Right now, we have a, there's a, the college, the college, so be adults. There is also an academy on the campus, which is middle school and high school. So if there were a mix of middle school, high school, and college students, they'll just be in separate wings or separate floors.
So all the amenities are really college dormitory related? Is that, is that a true statement?
Correct.
So I'm not going to name every one of them, but going to try to narrow it down in the resolution.
No cafeteria in there? No food or anything, I think?
No. The food would be just heated with a microwave. There'll be a sep, there's already a cafeteria in another building, so.
Any other questions? All right, I'll come back. I'm going to go to the public one more time. Anyone present wishing to speak to this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
I'm going to close the public hearing. One more time to the board. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Do, it could be. DPW, Fire Department, too early to really judge, say anything, till you get the full set of plans and- You have plans? All right. Any concerns?
No concerns, remains.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to answer. We're asking about landscaping and lighting plan. It's probably with those 52 pages. That's going to answer, we're asking about landscaping and lighting plan, that's probably with those 52 pages.
Do you have a landscaping and lighting plan that you're proposing there?
The lighting for, there is already street, there are already streetlights there, and if it's not bright enough, we would be able to add lighting that comes off of the buildings to shine on the roads and whatnot. And then for landscaping, just, just the current, the way it's currently landscaped.
You're not changing any black topping or anything?
No, there's no, no changing for what's currently there.
Mr. Zarkowski, anything stand out?
I mean, it's existing conditions.
Yes. Correct. That's fine, all right. Anyone else from the board? I know, I'm going to call for a resolution. Everybody thinks it's okay, well, I'll make resolution up, and if you need further discussion, we will during that time.
Are you changing the outside of the building at all?
Um, not the, no, it will be the same there. If there's any repair work that's needed, it'll just be repaired. No, not changing the complete facade or anything like that.
They wouldn't have to go to the Architectural Review Board, would they?
No, but I should have done that for the other DMU units. We'll have to notify them that they have to go to the Architectural Review Board. I believe 104 North Street has already gone to the Architectural Review Board. My mistake, I left that out. We'll make sure the applicants know about it.
This building isn't qualifying for any historical standards that it would have to abide by, is it?
None that I know of. Any historical standards for this building?
Not that we're aware of.
No. All right. On a resolution for Faintane College, 92 Seward Avenue, Seward Avenue, steward dormitories and other college-related amenities, namely a student center. It's going to be a real, really abilitation of a, of a building that had present uses there. Now going to be college uses, formerly a nurses quarter and a state hospital. Subject two, the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown in the state of New York, and if applicable, the County of Orange. In addition, throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables. The applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. I think you realize that if you don't start this project within six months, you need to send a letter to us extending your approval.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. See to DPW and the Fire Department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have some preliminaries. These are not for any action, but for future presentation and possible action at a date yet, not yet determined. So the first preliminary is Thomas Nassim, 79 Fulton Street, street-level commercial and multiple residential apartment complex. How you doing tonight, sir?
How do you, how do you do, everyone? My name is Thomas Lang, I'm an architect, and I'm working for Mr. Amir Habib, who is the owner of 79 Fulton Street.
Okay.
I do have some presentation materials here.
Great. Everyone, everyone real?
Anything we can put out at once?
Um...
If you do one at a time?
Sure. Do one at a time and explain it, please.
Okay, so this is the site, 79 Fulton Street. Right now, it's a Rite Aid, one-story commercial. That building will be raised to accommodate this new development, which is a mixed-use development. As I said, it's a mixed-use development, three stories. It's comprised of 33,600 square feet of residential floor area, of approximately 15,000 square feet commercial floor area. The, we have 32 apartments, 32 dwelling units, 30 of which are two-bedroom and two are one-bedroom. We did accommodate all the required parking for the commercial, which is on the front of the site, facing Fulton Avenue, I mean Fulton Street, I'm sorry. And then the residential parking at the rear is also fully accommodated, and according to the requirements of Table 1, UR3. We also have a recreation space on the roof of the second floor for the tenants, it's a covered recreation space. And we also have the site fully obscured with six-foot plantings around the whole perimeter of the site.
Okay.
Any questions?
So where's the entrance?
Let me get the other rendering. So this is the aerial view, rendering of the site. So this is the commercial strip here, obviously fronting on Fulton Street. The residential entrance is actually around the rear, and we do have a swing arm that will obstruct or prevent any commercial traffic from going into that residential parking area. So their access... So the residential entrance is here, at the rear of the building. The reg, the idea is that they would pull up in their car, there's a swing arm right here. They would use their key card or some type of remote access that gets them around the rear of the building, and that's the residential entrance at the rear.
And the commercial access is on Fulton?
All the commercial is fronting on Fulton Street.
Fulton and... No.
Well, the main, the main access would be on Fulton Street, but there are side entrances.
East Avenue, okay.
East Avenue and Academy.
That entrance off of Fulton Street is only from one direction, though, is that correct? Because there's a median that traffic would not be able to cross?
Right.
They'll be able to enter and exit there, though, because of Fulton Street being one-way.
Yeah, it would be one-way.
But if you were heading east on Fulton Street, you would have to make a left turn on the East Avenue and then turn into the parking lot?
No, right, it's just on the one side of one-way side, that they'll be able to come in and out, it'll be on the same side. They can't cross the road, there's a median there, anyway.
Are there going to be left turns allowed off of Academy Avenue into that facility? Because it'll be right after the intersection.
That's not an entrance there, right?
There's no entrance here.
That, I mean, it looks like an entrance, but it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, that gentleman's finger is right there, that is not an entrance.
There's a curb cut here?
Yeah, there's no curb cut there.
Yeah, there is a curb cut here.
There is?
Yes.
You don't...
Oh, okay.
Yes. This just all provides for the smooth flow of traffic within the site. So, you know, we don't want to bind people up if they want to enter into Academy or exit into Academy. That, that's fully possible in all directions. But I foresee the majority of the inflow and exit of traffic will be on the main road on Fulton Street.
But if you plan on using Academy Avenue as an entrance, you'll have to sign it properly that, you know, off Academy, you're only going to make a right or a left coming out onto Academy. Not, you know, not allow anybody to cross from the other lane.
Right.
Into that.
Right.
That would cause a lot of havoc.
No, no, definitely, definitely, right turn only, correct.
Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Madden? I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
No, absolutely, you know, because that's right after the traffic light we have at Fulton and Academy.
You can make a left into it.
I didn't realize it was an entrance from back here, I didn't see that.
So, in the current site, there's sort of like a small, not, you know, hill kind of?
Right, does an elevation change?
Level or take down, are you leaving?
No, we'd have to put a retaining wall back there.
Okay.
Would that totally disrupt your flow of traffic if, if we didn't see fit to put something off of Academy Avenue? Right there, anyway, Mr. Atkins?
I think we can still certainly make it work.
Okay.
But to me, it seems like the residential units would probably use Academy for the most part, because that would be their direct entrance to the back portion of the site for their parking.
Sure. Mr. Atkins?
I would prefer that they keep a right turn off Academy into that parking lot for the department access.
That's fine, then I stand corrected?
My concern would be the distance from the intersection might not be sufficient where you're showing it.
Okay.
It's a minimum of 50 feet away.
Is it 50?
Right. The regulation is 100?
Usually.
Oh.
There should be no left into it.
Also, that lane there is a right turn only lane. Coming out there on Academy, that, that lane that they would come out is a right turn only lane. I don't think they're going to be able to get all the way across to make a left there.
We could accommodate signs that direct the traffic out of the site in that direction to a right turn only.
Because that's always heavy traffic there, and it backs up at that traffic light.
No, it's right, too close to the other light, yeah.
Is that still a state road, Academy at that point, or it's a 17-hour turnup?
I, I can't answer that question.
It might be subject to a DOT.
Okay, well, that's where we're starting tonight, that's why we'll have to determine whether we need engineering and moving forward. That's why we have a preliminary.
So that was going to be a right, a right into and a right out of only? That's how you had it planned? No left into it, correct?
Correct.
And no left coming out either?
Would you, Mr. Atkins, you see that as an, as an necessity in order to get your trucks in, or?
No, I mean, they don't have it now.
Right. Okay.
We're also adding two stories on the top.
Yeah.
But if it's DOT regulation, it's DOT regulation.
All right, well, we'll have to vet that out. The DOT will determine whether that goes there or not.
If it was my preference, then yes, I would like to have an entrance there.
That's fine, understood.
John, would a traffic study have to be done, or there's so many lights there, anyway?
You have quite a bit more traffic that you're generating from this kind of density. So I would say that at least it should be evaluated as part of the security with the subject.
Yes, right here.
I'd like to see truck movement possible, especially if we have to get in a ladder truck.
Yeah, well, the turning radius, I think...
Turning radius for truck movements, yes.
Yeah, we got the whole front side of that building, I'm not overly concerned about it.
And then I have to look to see if there is the requirement for deliveries, loading docks, and something like this. I see the back of the parcel of the building is right on Oak Street. Some of the, they don't have any, they're making these deliveries in the front.
We do have a service corridor designated at the back of Oak Street, which has direct access to the rear of a majority of these stores.
But not all of them. And then what kind of deliveries are they getting? And how do they deliver?
Very small stores, I can't see like a large semi-trailer coming in here, right?
Panel truck takes a little, and it's on a residential road.
We can make some accommodations there.
How many commercial spaces are there?
Right now, we have about 15.
And then when you rented those out, they would have to come back and get the approval from the board?
Right.
So each one?
Right, whatever's necessary, certainly.
And one of the purposes tonight that Mr. Lang, I'll share with them, is that he wanted to see if, you know, the board had, this concept would be acceptable before he started delving into traffic studies, seeker, and all of that.
It's kind of similar to the Sterling Park scenario with the commercial on the bottom and...
Yeah, they're required to have the commercial on the bottom.
Yeah.
Here they have to, because it's DMU.
Yeah. This is the DMU zone?
Yes.
But the beauty of it, we do intent, you know, intently separate the residential from the commercial. So there's really no intermixture of the two, because basically, they have the rear side of, side of the site, the residential use, and then of course, the commercial strip on the front.
Were you looking for a reaction from us, Anthony?
Well, I mean, if you think the concept is acceptable, then this gentleman knows that he can move on and spend more money for plans and studies and everything else. That's basically why he's here.
Yep. I believe this concept for that parcel is wonderful.
Okay, that's good. I mean, we don't have to do a formal vote, as long as everyone has a...
Sounds great. In the second floor, you said it's going to be residential use, like a, like what, like just a lounge area, or?
What's that, the, the recreation space?
The covered area?
Yeah, we actually have a play area for the children at the rear portion of the second floor, and then the front portion will be for the adults or what have you.
Mr. Atkins, do you have a comment?
I have a question about the play area. So that play area that you have on there, that, that's allowable to take place over the, what's required in the DMU and the UR zone, that's...
Yes. Let's, let's say, we'll say yes because there's nothing prohibiting it, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I saw that the zoning said it, you know, when you do this, you have to have a certain amount of recreational area.
Correct.
Right, that's what we're trying to...
So you're putting it on the roof instead of a playground in the yard?
Exactly.
Yeah. Mr. Lang has tried to meet all of our requirements as best he possibly can. And once we get a fuller plan, we can, you know, delve into the safety of it all and make sure it's right.
And it'd be a fully non-combustible, of course, metal studs, everything.
Oh, you're saying that because I'm a fire inspector?
He's just trying to butter him up. Do you have the rendering of the, of that play area that you could show the board?
Sure. Right here? Yes. You know, the realistic view. That would be, the rear portion would be for the children, and of course, like a lounge. And then also roofed as well for weather protection.
I'm sure we'll have more questions once we get, you know, some plans, and that's good. So, Mr. Lang, you can get with our clerk, and our clerk will develop a fee, a fee and an escrow schedule for you. So you can proceed.
Thank you.
I think the board is, in, in a concurrence, that it's, it's a viable project. Unless, I don't, I don't hear anything otherwise right now, so...
Great, I mean, that's been vacant and that other side perching, and that other, the ghost room, the ghost room, right?
Right.
I would just add that, that there is a subdivision associated with this, where an extinguishing of a subdivision line, you have two lots combined.
Right now, it's two separate, right, will merge it, right.
So there is a subdivision involved, so there has to be plans by a licensed surveyor, and then the site plans, because there's going to be landscaping, obviously some kind of drainage somewhere. There'll have to be a subdivision by a licensed supervisor.
So you're going to do a lot-line change, or so he has to go to the cap?
Yeah, it's two separate lots right now, we're just going to merge them into one.
So you have to go to the common council?
Yeah, that will be us, that'll be the common council, only two lots.
Yeah, he's going to have to do that first before he comes back.
Or in the process, he has to take care of it, yes.
It's all under common ownership, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, in subdivisions, our common council has to approve them. So you have to do the survey first and get your lot line changed before you start your other work.
Roughly, do you have a rough idea of how long that process usually takes?
I do not, no.
It should be a month or two.
You have to go, when you have the plans, go see the city clerk at the clerk's office, and he'll explain everything that has to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think you have a general consensus.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Move forward and good luck.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice.
Looking forward, thank you.
And Universal Communications Network decided not to come in tonight. They have more work. It's 3950 Dulson Avenue, they want to, they get an office building out of it, more than it is now. Want to add some stories to it, and parking.
That's what we just approved, huh?
No, this is a-
The Gerta Law-
Gerta Law offices?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Down there?
So that did, did it go across?
We don't know, but they're starting to come to us about developing it. Right across the street from Artis Cleaners?
Yeah, they want it raised, they want it to go higher?
Two or three stories.
Three stories.
Three stories.
As of now.
As of right, as of today.
And it's already two stories?
Yes, two.
Did I want to go five lines?
Yes. Yep. All right. Be nothing more on the agenda. Motion for adjournment, Mr. Numcheck, Mr. Madden, all in favor?
Aye.